Welcome to the regular meeting of the Federal Board of Education for October 11th. We have Mr. Liu, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Zahn's son is having a health issue, she won't be here tonight, Dr. Tidal's here, I'm John Matola, this is Iaccone, Mrs. Albin, Mr. Carey, and Mr. Fadabine, and we have our Ludlow representatives, Emma Sweet and Sarah Wynet, is that correct? Okay, welcome everyone, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
The next item is item number seven, Approval of Minutes, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the September 13th, 2011, of the regular meeting of September 13th, 2011. Mrs. Iaccone, seconded by Mrs. Brand, any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote? Yes, Mrs. Albin?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I'm ready too. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
One abstention. Okay, Mr. Liu, thank you. Okay, so we are now on item number eight, Student Committee Liaison Reports. First item is Stephanie Tashara from Fairfield Ward, I don't think she's here this evening, no, I don't see her. So move on to Emma Sweet and Sarah Wynet, our new Fairfield Ludlow High School Student Liaison Representatives. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Things at Ludlow are going very well, it's been a great start to the new year. We had SATs last Saturday, so a lot of students participated in those, and we have PSATs, Practice SATs coming up for the sophomores and juniors. We also had a very nice 9/11 memorial ceremony at the beginning of the year. We also, this past week, we had the Marine Band come and play for us, and that was a great experience for those of us in the music program. There was a woman who came to speak to the Cancer Awareness Club on brain cancer, and I heard, I'm not a member of that club, but I heard that was a great experience for them.
Our sports teams are also doing very well. Yesterday was our soccer game, Ludlow versus Ward, and tomorrow we have our volleyball game versus Ward as well. So a lot of student participation, and we actually have a new spirit club at school to get more student participation in terms of sporting events. Sarah and I are currently planning the homecoming dance for juniors and seniors, which will take place in next week after the homecoming football game, and I'm pretty sure we're going against Brian McMahon, so hopefully we'll have a good victory for that one. We're also currently fundraising to raise money for senior prom and different events that we do throughout the year, and including those fundraising is our senior t-shirts, which we have for all seniors, and actually at the end of the year we take a big group picture, all the seniors together wearing their shirts, so a lot of different events going on. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Mrs. Albin, do you have any reports?
None.
Okay. Mrs. Brand.
Yes, thank you. There actually, and the Board of Health meeting was postponed because of the holiday, and it will be on next Monday evening, and as far as the SES report, I think I mentioned it last time, but again, the core, common core state standards have been adopted by the state of Connecticut, they were rolled out September 26th. So people understand what this means, this is going to require all districts in the state to review their curriculum, make sure it's in alignment. I spoke with Dr. Tidal about it, and he said, based on our cycle of review, we actually should be on target to be ready by 2015. But this will mean that you will not see CMTs any longer, you will not see the CAPT any more, longer. The kind of testing you're going to see is completely different. What will happen is you'll take question one, for instance, and if student A gets it correct, they have a different question for the second one versus the other student that gets it wrong. So they're always adjusting what they're feeding at the next level, and it's constantly an interactive piece, and the intent is to not just know what students can, cannot do, it's also to identify really where they are. It just is going to be in a huge undertaking. The catch is going to be the testing part of it, which is supposed to be done on computers. In fact, it is, Dr. Pikoff thought that the Commissioner and Governor were favorable to suspend the CMT and the CAPTs for a year, possibly two, so districts would have time to make transitions. In fact, what districts are doing now is forming what they call transition teams to help facilitate this piece, because how they teach in the class and the pieces that have to be incorporated, but also how they teach it is going to be very different. The key thing that I know that they wanted to make sure everyone was aware of in all the districts is that districts that have iPads, iPads cannot be used to be able to take this exam. So technology is going to be a huge budget piece that all districts are going to be looking at. They also are looking at how to develop a safe school climate, which is part of, we remember that bullying piece, we have a deadline, and you know, please, you're encouraged to share what we have with SES and SES with us, including the bullying policy which came up earlier, they'd like very much to partake and see where we all are. Their preschool for the six to six was accredited with outstanding results, they, it was like eight out of 10, they got 100 percent, they really did extremely well. They also had some issues, behavioral issues, and they investigated those behavioral issues, and I mentioned it because their findings were very interesting, they tied it in with their test scores and found out the kids that actually had the behavioral problems were not the kids who were testing poorly, they were the kids that actually had high test scores. The significance of this is that it helped them adjust what they were doing in the school to better meet what the issues were and how to take care of them. See, financial pieces, I mentioned before that their large projects were under budget, and they were all on track for payments as well as reimbursements to the state. And the last piece that we have, you got a copy of our draft minutes, I don't, ooh, beg your pardon, I don't think it says draft on them, but they are relative to what will be coming up shortly, and also what we're going to be having for future meetings for the Subcommittee on Policy. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Brand. Mrs. Dow.
For Finance Committee, no report on that. For CAE, just that their 2011 task forces are now getting started and underway, they will be reporting in January, there were five task forces that they're working on, secondary school reform implementation, education cost sharing formula, the VOTEC schools here in our state, the distribution of state funds to municipalities, and also closing the achievement gap, which we've been hearing a lot about, obviously, already. And as for SEPTA, they have, well, we did have a September meeting, which I will report on, but first to say that their October meeting is tomorrow night, and they are having a focus on IEPs tomorrow evening, and they're actually doing a mock IEP so that parents can learn what to do and actually what not to do during an IEP. And so it's going to be interactive with parents and professionals, so doctors and attorneys will be there as well. So that should be a good informative session. From our September meeting, some of the points that came out is that SEPTA is now on Facebook. They have a number of programs that they've started for the year for students. One is first tee golfing at Fairchild Wheeler, and it's golfing lessons for students ages 10 through 17. Their challenger sports soccer program has begun, their teen nights at the Y have also begun, and that's the last Friday of every month for our teenage groups. And they are planning a trip to the pumpkin patch for Tuesday, October 18th, after school, if they're going up to Jones Tree Farm, so children can pick out pumpkins and have hay rides. So they do have a number of things going, activities going now. Some of the things that they're working on is building relationships with the ECC. Other years, the ECC was not involved as much with SEPTA. This year now, they have an ECC rep that they have on their executive boards, they're hoping to bring the two together and work more closely together, and ECC is very exciting, excited about getting their new playground, that was mentioned. They are using Volunteer Spot this year, they're going to give it a try and see how it works out, it's an online website where you can sign up to volunteer, so you don't have to be at all the meetings to, yeah, in order to volunteer, because there might be one little thing that fits into your schedule where the regular monthly meetings don't, so they're going to try it and see if they get more volunteer sponsors that way. Let's see, they are actually having a little raffle going on. For teachers and professionals who join SEPTA this year, will be entered into a drawing to win an all expense paid trip from SEPTA into New York City to see, to a seminar being presented by author and educator, Marcia Garcia Winner, she was here, I believe it was two years ago, and gave a presentation. Teachers and pairs, I know, were really impressed by her, and so this year they're giving, like I said, some prizes of a trip to see her in New York City. And speaking of membership, their membership is online, and I do invite all Board of Ed members to join up and show their support. And, let's see, they're having a fundraiser, which is also online, it's called Mabel's Labels, they have all types of colorful, indestructible, easy to use labels that they say are dishwasher, microwave, laundry, and child safe. So whatever you can think that you might need to label for your child or for you, they probably have the label there, and it's online at www.fse.mabel.ca, and if you place an order and note that it's for SEPTA, they will receive a portion of your funds. And this year, for the first year, they are participating in the Reflections Program. This year, the theme is diversity means, and they thought that was very apropos for their group, so they are participating in that. And the only, the last thing is that, say, I told you that, a really busy meeting this year in September here, the U.S. Department of Education Special Ed Program does a five-year, like a rotating five-year inspection of the different state programs every year, and Connecticut's is up this year, so they're asking for parent input, there is, they want to hear from parents since they're directly affected with the Special Ed Program, hear about how it is in your town, so any parents can go online, it's Survey Monkey and it's online, there's a link to it from the SEPTA's website, so any parents can find that there. And that, that is it. And other than to say that, since this is, yeah, my, well, tomorrow night will be my last meeting with SEPTA, I am going tomorrow night, but I really have enjoyed working with SEPTA the last two years, and it might say they're special in their title, but they really are, it's been a wonderful group of people to work with, and I will miss that, and so it's a wonderful opportunity for anyone who's going to be staying on board if you want to take that job for, come November.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fadabine, you're up.
Well, as we get into this new school year, the Transportation Safety Advisors get a little quiet, but we did have one referral last month, and that was decided.
Thank you. Mrs. Iaccone?
I wasn't able to attend the Special Project Standing Building Committee meeting, however, the committee did recommend awarding the contract for Sherman to THP. I spoke with the chairman this afternoon, so they are doing their best to get moving on that. The RTM obviously approved the Sherman project, unanimously, I might add, and at the Board of Finance, they approved our warranty, our roof warranty request, and they approved changes to the purchasing guidelines, which are hopefully going to be very helpful to us.
Thank you. Mr. Carey's up.
So PTA Council met last Wednesday, first regular meeting of the year, after our Leadership Council in September. Among the things that PTAs do for us in town include enrichment programs, as well as a lot of support at the school level. The Council, above and beyond what your local school does, this year has a $58,000 budget to assist with scholarships, enrichment, and programs that go above and beyond in assisting your local PTAs. So I want to thank the members of our PTA Council, our PTAs, for all the work they do to help us, because it's invaluable work that really does supplement a lot of the work that the administration and teachers do during the day. Other note coming out of that is that PTA Council will have a Board of Ed Candidates' Open Forum on Monday, October 24th, at 7:30 PM, here, in this room. And there is no report for facilities.
Thank you. Mr. Liu.
No, nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. I'm up, I have nothing to report. Mrs. Zahn's not here, so we will move on. I would like to ask the Board's indulgence and skip the Superintendent's Report and go down to item 10, Old Business B, Approval of Understanding on Health Insurance, our First Selectman's here, and he wanted to say a few words about that, so with your indulgence, I'll take a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the understanding on health insurance. Mrs. Iaccone, seconded by Mr. Carey. Before, I don't think we're going to have a huge discussion about this tonight, but just to give you a little bit of the background, at our last meeting, the Board discussed this agreement, and we had some discussions with respect to some changes in the language, and over the last month or so, we made some changes to the language, it's enclosure number six for the public's benefit. We conferred with our legal counsel on this, made some changes, tightened up some of the language. It was sent to the other town bodies last week, I believe it was Wednesday or so, and the First Selectman, and I believe the Chairman of the Board of Finance requested that, we don't take action on this tonight, that we table it, because they needed to take a look at it, because we did make some changes to the language. So with that said, Mr. Tetra, do you want to come up and say a few words with respect to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I had a chance to talk with Dr. Tidal. Chairman Matola, Mrs. Zahn?
Might not be on. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mike. I had a chance to talk with Dr. Tidal, Chairman Matola, also Chairman Tom Flynn of the Board of Finance, and Paul Hiller in my office, and when we looked at this, one of the additions or changes that was made was a timeframe, at which point the reserves would be adjusted. We'd like time to go back and take a look at what the tax impact of that is, and what that does overall to the adjustments. Let me just step through in some simple terms. We're basically adjusting asset accounts. Those asset accounts are, impact the entire town balance sheet. These are the asset accounts, or the reserve accounts, that the rating agencies take a very close look at. The town currently sits with a AAA credit rating and a negative outlook from Moody's. The other two, S&amp;P and Fitch, have a trip, have given us a AAA credit rating with flying colors. The concern from Moody's was specifically what we call the Internal Service Fund. That fund is made up of the insurance fund for the Board of Ed, the insurance fund for the town, and the Workers' Comp Fund, or our overall risk management fund. The big drivers on that, or the biggest driver on that, is the Workers' Comp number. That's what makes us very sensitive to any adjustments in the reserve. The Board of Finance, over the last three to four years, has taken a very close look at this fund to make sure that each of the accounts was fully funded. However, the Board of Finance had not been able to, and the administration had not been able to, adjust those balances based on the challenging economy we went through and the intent of keeping tax increases to a minimum. We couldn't do the 1.9, the 1.6, and the 4.0 this pastime, and also go back and increase those. The simple math is this, we raised about 230 million a year in tax revenue, all right? So 2.3 million, or I'm going to say 2 million, just to keep the math easy, equates to a 1% tax increase. So if we're to drop this reserve to $1 million, that's in essence saying, let's raise taxes a million bucks, or 1%, or, and that's, when you're trying to minimize tax increases, the Board of Finance didn't think it was prudent to go back and to adjust that. Knowing that full well, that at some point we have to adjust that, knowing full well that the rating agencies want to see that number go up and get better balance. The other piece of this has been the very significant growth on the Workers' Comp side. Not anybody's fault, it's just the reality of things. And just to put that in perspective, going back to the June 30th, '06, and there's a couple different numbers on here, if you look at these sheets, I think you may have seen these during the budget process, there's a cash balance and an accrual balance. I'm going to just address the accrual balance at the moment, again, to keep things simple. In '06, the accrual balance in the risk management area, which includes the Workers' Comp, and that's the biggest piece of that, was $4.8 million. The projection, actually, the unaudited actual, for June 30th, '11, is a negative 7.8 million So that's one of the financial challenges we have. So that's a long way of saying what we, what I am asking you to consider is, please postponing this for now, let Dr. Tidal, myself, Mr. Flynn, and Paul Hiller come back and complete the financial picture here in terms of how to get us from A to B, so that when you consider this, you have all the facts in front of you in terms of what the impact is on the town and the other reserve funds as we go through that.
Thank you. Mr. Tetra. Board members, have any questions or comments? Mrs. Brand, do you have something?
Yeah, I keep looking at this, and to be very frank with you, I actually met with Mr. Tetra, I spoke with Tom Flynn, I spoke with Paul Hiller, I met with Dr. Tidal, and I think this is something that we, quite frankly, don't need a memorandum to address, I think we can address it as part of the normal budget process. I'm reticent to see us pursue it within a whole lot of vigor, because I don't think a side agreement is necessary. What we have been very concerned about, at least I have been, and I think through the discussions at the table, was the previous agreement that was between Dr. Clark and Selectman Flato, and I wondered if you would consider putting that on your agenda at the Board of Selectmen to take that agreement and make that agreement null and void. There is a stipulation that if the Board does it, that the town takes all the funds that are in that account. If the Board of Selectmen takes action and dismisses it entirely and takes it off, then there is no penalty, but then everyone's, we're working with a very, I think, a good place for a starting point. Right now, when we're walking in and looking at this, the issue that we have a concern about, at least I do, is if we look at one, honestly, I'm not sure if it would even hold up, but I think it would go a long way if we could take an agreement that, quite frankly, I don't think anyone recognizes is a really, a great deal, to take that and just have it be null and void.
Mr. Liu, do you have something?
Yeah, I would tend to agree, I mean, but I would only just say that wherever we go forward with a new agreement, that's a new agreement. I do think it would show a lot of good faith, and I think it is unanimous, if I'm speaking out of turn here, please correct me, that everyone feels that the old agreement is wrong, doesn't work, and should go away. So I think it would be a good idea to get rid of that first, and then we can go forward, if there is a forward to go to. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Carey?
Just watching this for the last three years, and sitting at the other side of the table, Mr. Tetra, first, I think that, I'd like to say thank you for the work that's been done in this thus far. I really think that the Board asked Dr. Tidal to look at this and address it. I know our First Selectmen's had a lot of things on his plate, the fact that we've come this far, I think, is a testament to the hard work himself and Mr. Flynn and Dr. Tidal. You know, in terms of the request, I think we should honor this request this evening. And in terms of some of the substance, as I understood it, that the First Selectmen has brought forth, speaking for myself, I think that the piece that's creating concern has been understood that, you know, through discussions at the Board of Finance, that there's stairs that have to go up and stairs we have to go down, how long it takes to get up and down those stairs, I think, is something that we need to understand from the town. So, you know, personally, I'm open to hearing what the other bodies have to say on that, but I think out of respect for the First Selectmen, the fact that they've put this much time into it, we should respect this request, and I'm willing to withdraw my second for this and make a motion to postpone this to a date certain, at, you know, the Chair's recommendation.
Dr. Tidal, do you have a recommendation on one of?
Well, and I'm fine with this, I just, one of the reasons that we need this, or not this, something, we need guidance, I need guidance from the Board, about how we budget health insurance for the 12, 13 budget. That's the most immediate need. And that can be done with or without a memorandum of understanding, okay? But, so, but at the same time, if we're going to try to come up with a memorandum, if we're going to try to work this through, realistically, the discussions are not going to happen until after the election. So I would recommend, if you want to retake this up, that you postpone it to a date certain of the December Board Meeting.
Do we have one December meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to postpone this to the December 2011 Board Meeting. Mr. Carey, anyone going to second this? Mrs. Iaccone, any discussion on the motion to postpone? Yes, Mrs. Iaccone?
Whether or not I postpone, I have a question for the First Selectmen. I appreciate where you're coming from and the fact that you're here and you're taking the time to go through it all, but I was representing the Board at the Board of Finance meeting where, I believe, you told us we weren't an island, and that we all needed to be working together. If we do postpone this and you are sitting in the First Selectmen's office, is it your intent to go ahead and fulfill the memorandum of understanding? Do you want, would you like to see this Board pursue it, so that we are working jointly together on this, or would it be your preference that we just go ahead without a memorandum and we sort of go through the budget process, what we did last year, and in my opinion, then it leads one party to maybe be acting as an island again?
I think that what we need to do is come to an agreement, this is one of those areas, the reserve accounts affect the entire town, all right? They affect our AAA credit rating, it's an area of weakness right now that's been identified by the rating agencies. Since we got that negative outlook from Moody's two years ago, the reserve balance in total has come down. So in essence, we're in a weaker position than we were back then. That was the concern last spring, as well as the miscommunication, I won't go through all of that, but I think this, I came into this, Dr. Tidal, Mr. Flynn, and Paul Hiller were already meeting when I kind of joined the team and sat on this side. So from my standpoint, I think we want to have, whatever you want to call it, we want to make sure we have something, an understanding, that basically says, look, here's how we're working together on this. And also, so that we have an impact of what you want to see, kind of, here's the cash flow, here's how it rolls out, and here's how we get from A to B. And then we're all in agreement, and we're all buying in, including the Board of Finance, in terms of how we get there. So I think, yeah, having something in writing, at least in terms of laying out the facts and what the tax impact is, is important, so all the bodies are making an informed decision about what this means.
Okay, good. And just to follow up on that, then, would you agree that since education's coming to the table, and we're willing to put forth these funds because we're all one town, that the town then should be stepping up to do the same thing? Is that, in essence, what? Is that, in essence, what you're doing with Mr. Flynn and Mr. Hiller?
I think philosophically, that was the Board of Fin, and I'm going to reference the Board of Finance, folks, because I sat on the Board of Finance kind of when we had these discussions, so I'm not avoiding that, but the issue was, we consciously decided not to raise those, we consciously decided to do two things. One, fully fund the town's part of the insurance balance, which hadn't been happening up to four years ago, as soon as we found out that wasn't happening. So the last four years, that has happened, all right? And then when you look at where we've gotten to, if I look at the '06-June 30 numbers, and I'm going to go back to a cash basis, the risk management fund is $370,000. When you do that on accrual basis, we get to 7.8 million negative, but on a cash basis, it's a positive 370. And part of that's because the workers' comp numbers are playing out a good 20 years in the future, so that's a much larger liability based on what those are. And every case isn't played out 20 years, but just to help with the analogy. The town on a cash basis is $600,000 to the good. On an accrual basis is $240,000 to the negative. That's because of good experience, fully funding it, and because of good experience on the town side, that has helped us strengthen where the town side component is. Board of Ed is $4.8 million ahead on a cash basis and $3 million and change ahead on an accrual basis. All right? So the concept has always been to make sure that we straighten out these accounts and fully fund those. The challenge at the moment is the workers' comp number, and how can we do that in this kind of tax environment where we're trying to minimize them?
And for the benefit of...
So as we move, as we move the reserve amounts, we just need to do that in concert so everybody knows where we're getting there. The, nobody is trying to take the Board of Ed reserve, nobody's trying to have the Board of Ed reserve more than they need to. It's just getting from A to B in a planned fashion, I think, is what we're trying to get to.
And just for the benefit of the public, can you tell us which side of the ledger the workers' comp is carried for the Board of Education?
It's not the town side right now is funding all of that.
It's not what?
It's not carried on the Board of Ed side. It's my understanding the town side is funding all of that.
So you're handling the funding of our workers' compensation fund?
Well, let's clarify that a bit, right? After the first year of workers' comp, the town carries it.
Actually, that's one of the, what I'll call, management by rumor pieces.
Right.
We talked about that this afternoon.
Right.
When I checked with Mr. Hiller, he said that's not the case. But I think, and not to argue that at all at this point...
Right.
I think what we need is to have all that on the table, because there are some rumors floating around, and I think that this board, as well as the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, needs the facts out to say, here's what it is.
Right.
In terms of looking at what that going forward. But the liability, basically, is roughly, is generated 50% from the Board of Ed side and 50% from the town side.
All right. This is about health insurance. The only discussions we've had have been about health insurance. Workers' comp has not been part of the discussion, it's not in the agreement. This was just to try to clean up the mess that we were all in last year that put everybody in a bad spot. That was the idea here, and I'm hoping we can at least get an understanding of it, whether it's in writing or not, I don't know, but that was the big thing we were trying to get squared away. Workers' comp is a whole separate, big issue that hasn't even been part of the discussion.
No, and I understand that, and I'm not trying to bring workers' compensation into it, I'm just trying to get to the point where we are all one unit, and we are all one town, and we are all trying to figure out the best way to do this for everybody, and it sounds like putting something in writing would be in the best interests of the Board of Education and the town. That's my recommendation.
I've never questioned that, that's kind of always been on the table, and as I said, I stepped into this when these guidelines were attempted, were being rewritten. So I didn't rethink that, that seemed like a reasonable approach to go from one written statement to another.
All right. Based on all of that, my recommendation would be to approve postponing this so that this can be further vetted out.
I saw Mrs. Alvin first, then Mr. Liu, then Mr. Carey, then Mr. Fattabene.
I would agree that the prior letter of understanding entered into by the prior first selectmen, Mr. Flato, and our former superintendent, Dr. Clark, should be rescinded. And if the better way for that to happen is on the Board of Selectmen's side, I would prefer that, if that protects the board better. As for this memo of understanding, I would not be comfortable with it. I believe that entering into such a letter of understanding, while it is just that, it's a letter of understanding, and it could be rescinded by either party at any time, it's a slippery slope for the school system to start going down that road. I don't think that we need it to do what we need to do. I believe that this board, or the subsequent board that will be seated in November, it would be possible for this board to do it tonight if they so chose, we can give that direction to the superintendent and what to do with the insurance account. And one suggestion is that we direct the superintendent not to touch the funds in the insurance account when building the budget. And if any such funds are deemed to be necessary to be building in the budget, this board could instruct the superintendent that that would not be done without notification to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance following notification to this board. That would be quite simple. We would take that responsibility. It would not require a letter of understanding with anyone other than this body and the superintendent. That would be my suggestion.
We're considering a motion to postpone, just a little reminder to all of us. Mr. Liu, then I think I have Mr. Carey.
Thank you. I just want to, I want to reiterate what Mr. Carey said and what Mrs. Iacono said, in that I think you've done a really great job with trying to attempt to looking at this. I think you've done some really great jobs with bold steps to try to correct some of the missteps of the last administration, and I commend you for that. I think, again, as we've all agreed and said out loud, this last letter was really, it's a terrible thing, and it needs to go away, and I think in, to further those bold steps as a sign of good faith, the sooner this thing goes away and we correct a wrong before moving on to other steps would be the best interest of all parties. Thank you.
Mr. Carey, then Mr. Fattabene.
Good, Chair, and Mr. Tetra, I've heard several suggestions from our board now that we move forward without an agreement. And my concern with that would be, how would the rating agencies look at our reserve funds that don't have an agreement between two parties, one of which has complete control of its funds, being the Board of Ed?
First of all, I don't mean to speak for the rating agencies, I don't know if they, it's my, I don't believe they know about the agreement anyway, or the letter. All they're doing is looking at the total dollars in the reserve fund and looking at the total liabilities and saying that's enough or not enough. They're not worried about whether, they're looking at it as one big town. So to some degree, they don't care if it's a Board of Ed liability or a town liability. To them, it's all a liability against limited reserves.
Good. So that being said, is it your feeling that we should have an agreement, not have an agreement? I've been under the impression that we want that, but I'm hearing different from some of my fellow board members. What's your preference?
Simply, we need an agreement to get from A to B. If the issue is, you know, I'm not trying to get involved in the budgeting for the Board of Ed from that standpoint, I'm not trying to micromanage or control how you're dealing with your insurance costs, I would suggest to you, because you've changed several things, from the stop-loss to the lower contribution, all based on a positive experience trend, you may want to kind of watch that happen for a while, but that's for your consideration, not from here. But the simple part is, before we change anything, I just want to know what the facts are and what we're talking about so we can see what's going to happen. And I don't have anything in front of me that shows what the tax impact over the next few years of any adjustments are, and what we have to model in order to build up some of these reserves, independent of any action by this board. And that's what I'd like to say before making any decisions.
So that being said, and I know we're on the motion, but I just, I do want to address, was I carry part of our agreement around on my phone, which is kind of scary. I've heard several members say, we just have to rescind or get rid of the agreement, and there's a perception that the agreement would favor us if the town canceled it, and I don't necessarily believe that to be true. And I'll read you the specific couple sentences that concern me, and it says, "In the event of termination, the full amount of the board's account from the town risk retention fund, including one month reserve, shall be forthright under the custody of the board." That means we get our money plus one month reserve. There's a lot more than that sitting there. That's not all our money, it's also contributions from our employees. However, the amount in excess of one month reserve remaining at the end of the current fiscal year shall remain for the exclusive use of the town. So if this agreement is broken, rescinded, removed, any amount over IBNR or one month's retention, which at last look, in the last budget cycle, I recall, to be about 1.9 million, could be withdrawn from the account. So I don't think we want to rush to remove the other agreement without having a new agreement put in place that basically protects those funds, which this agreement that Dr. Title and Mr. Tetra have been working on seems to do. If the question is timing in terms of the town's reserve, and again, I have no problem with that being worked out based on what makes budgetary sense for the town, and as much as you don't want to manage our fund, we don't want to manage yours. So we just want to make sure it's fair for both parties. And to Dr. Title's point, if he needs direction, I think that my direction would be to stay at the 200% this year, and we'd work our way into it in December.
Mr. Fattabene?
I guess to the Chair, I ask, first, Selectman Tetra, whether the intent of the postponement now is to, in your opinion, make an effort to come to some other new understanding? Or do you believe that the prior memorandum of understanding is a good one? Or is it your intent to try and negotiate or try and come up with some other understanding?
I think the, what I liked about the process when I stepped into it is that the superintendent, the chairman of the Board of Finance, and the chief fiscal officer of the town, the first selectmen, are all sitting down trying to come up with a solution to a town-wide issue, and I thought that was a good process. I thought that involved all the stakeholders from that standpoint. So I guess I'd like to continue that. You know, ideally, my focus is on getting literally from A to B, and I know, just to explain, the issue is, the reserve money was generated on a Board of Ed account, if you will, because of good experience on your side. You followed the actuarial recommendations, you had good experience, that reserve built up. Nobody is talking about taking any of that money or accessing any of the money, that's not part of the game plan at any point. The goal is, we've got, the town side looks like it's starting to move in the right direction, and I think through appropriate action by the Board of Finance over the last few years. And then I, we do have an issue to address on the workers' comp side in addition. Not anybody's fault, but we do need to figure out how to address that, because that impacts the reserve account. And right now, that's the number one issue for the rating agencies in terms of what we're doing.
Can I ask a question a different way? In a way, in your opinion, by postponing this, do you believe the parties could come to some other understanding that is different than the original memorandum of understanding?
The original one was the one signed by Mr. Flato and Dr. Clark.
And Dr. Clark.
It's, my understanding, we've been sitting down for the last three or four months to come up with a new agreement that seemed to address the problems better from all parties than that one did.
But you're, do you believe that you can achieve that with this postponement and coming up with a better understanding? Is it, do you...
Yes, I mean, if, I'm not sure that what is before you now would get passed by any of the other boards. Is that, I mean, did I answer that clearly enough, or do you want me to say something?
Well, I just want to make certain that if we are postponing this, we are working towards a better mutual understanding than was in the prior memorandum of understanding that was signed. So I hate to have a postponement and come to the conclusion that we're not going to have some other understanding.
We had, okay, yeah, then simply the answer is yes, I think we need new understanding. I'm not trying to push us back, I'm not trying to push back the clock.
Right. So the expectation of both parties here is to come to some other understanding that is different than the original understanding that was signed by first selectmen Flato and Dr. Clark at the time, because the parties seem to agree that that understanding is not necessarily workable or desirable.
Correct.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that, it was...
Yeah, and again, I thought that because we had the Board of Finance, Town Superintendent all together on that, and I thought that was a good working relationship to make sure everybody was kind of moving towards a new agreement on that.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So we have on the table a motion to postpone to the December meeting. Thank you, Mr. Tetra. Is there any public comment on the motion to postpone, and the motion to postpone only? I believe it's been seconded already, right? Our secretary's not here tonight, so...
Moved by...
Moved by Mrs. Iacono, seconded by Mr. Carey, it was, just for the, okay. Moved by Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Iacono for the record. You got it, Bev?
She's in December.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on this motion postponed to the December meeting? Seeing none, all in favor. We've got Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Matola, Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Brand, Mr. Liu, opposed. Nothing opposed, and Mrs. Alvin abstains.
Seven zero.
Thank you. And now, moving along, we're going to go back to item number nine, superintendent's report.
I know this will seem anticlimactic...
[laughing]
...after the stimulating health insurance discussion. Get my bearings here. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Mr. Tetra for how much time he's spent on this with me up to this point, and for coming tonight. And Mr. Flynn was going to be here tonight as well, but then he was informed that he had something he could not extract himself from, so we are all trying to work on this. All right. Enrollment and staffing update, there are two enclosures in your pack in addition to the pink sheet. The short version on enclosure two is to draw your attention to the contrast between the enrollment changes, actual enrollment changes, from October 1, 2010 to October 1, 2011, and to contrast that with the staffing changes, actual staffing changes, from 2010 to 2011. I put it on one page to show you that the enrollment, and this is K to 12 enrollment, there was a good question about that that came around, this differs from the pink sheet because I did not put pre-K into this number. The reason I didn't put pre-K in the number is, if you recall, we changed our pre-K program this year, and we're serving more pre-K kids. And so I didn't want people to think that the enrollment increases were a result of our adding pre-K, but this is the best apples-to-apples comparison in what we really staff to, which is, you know, to a large part, the K to 12. So that's the distinction. So we have 131 more kids, and we have 29.25 FTE if you were staff members. That's the bottom line. That's the point of enclosure two. All right? So this is actual. And then there's one more point, I'll take any questions on it. Closure three, which is related, is how does our actual FTE count compare to the budgeted FTE count? In other words, the board, when it passed the budget, we adjusted FTE counts. And now that the dust has settled, and October 1 is here, you know, did we add a bunch of people, subtract a bunch of people, what did we do? And the answer is, we're almost exactly on the number. The FTE count in the budget is 1,426.9, and the actual is 1427.65, within one FTE count out of 1,426. And that's largely just a, we had to hire an additional paraprofessional for some reason. On the certified side, it's a virtual identical number. So what you passed, and what we agreed to, and what we said would happen, happened. You might remember, the board, when we did the budget cut, cut 36 positions net out of the budget to make it balance, but we had asked for six additional positions to handle enrollment increases, hence the net of 30, which is what you have here. So everything we said we were going to do, we did. The budget that you all agreed to, as amended, has been enacted, and that's the story on enrollment and staffing, where we stand.
Mr. Liu has a question.
Oh, yes. Well, I'm, yeah, I'm done with that part.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Tetra. I just wanted to just check, because I couldn't find some documents that I wanted to look at, and I, and thank you for explaining the differences there, because I was confused by that.
Yeah.
So whether it's 131, this is just about enrollment right now, and I'm sorry if it's a little sidetracked, but I'm just wanting to understand this. Whether it's 131 or 169, if you add the preschool enrollment, we are higher than what we had thought we were going to be projected as enrollment.
Yeah, we're actually...
Yeah, we're actually, and not to confuse the matter more, remember, at the last meeting, I passed out where we were compared to our projections.
Right.
And we were about 40 higher than our projections. So that's to answer your question. And all of that is explainable by the kindergarten enrollment.
The 57.
The kindergarten enrollment of 800 is 40 more than we projected for kindergarten, which was 760.
Okay. And then I thought, from looking at the minutes, that it said it was 57 more, but am I, did I miss that?
The kindergarten numbers are 40.
Okay.
There have been, subsequent to that number, there were some adjustments in the other, the middle school and high school counts went down slightly.
Okay.
So there were adjustments between the 915 numbers and the 930 numbers.
Right, okay.
So really, we were right on, you know, right on the money in terms of our projections, except for kindergarten.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And despite that, additional kids, we still brought it in within the FTE count. All right, so that's that. I should just point out, and you'll see this coming, and it's the reason that I, sort of pushing us on the Ludlow project a bit here, is if you look at our four highest grades for enrollment right now, our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. Next year, they will be sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. We've built out the middle schools, we're fine. These numbers are rolling into our high schools. The simple math is, for the next two years, about 700 kids are going to graduate, this is the, both high schools combined, this is just the big picture here. 700 kids are going to leave 12th grade, and 850 are going to come into 9th grade for two consecutive years. All right? So they're here, they're coming, they don't leave. Our projections, based on a cohort survival, have been right on the money with that. So that's why I'm asked, you'll see later on the agenda, that we need to signal to the town that we need to do something with Ludlow to address this. The kids are here, they are coming, and they're coming to both schools, but that's just, that's what it is. And they're not, it's not going to decline. It's never declined, not going to decline, not in those grades. Okay. That's it on enrollment. We're kind of doing a, this is sort of like a three-part quarterly report. Sort of, this is the meeting for the quarterly financials, and so what we're going to do is, I expanded it a bit, now Tom is away, but what we're going to do on a quarterly basis, as well as the financials, is give you a report on where we stand on our maintenance projects on a quarterly basis. All right? So we can show you where they have all been. Now, this is mostly about the, I'll call them the maintenance projects that were in the operating budget. Now, how there's like 40 of them in the back of the book, you know, and it's, well, they're all listed here, right? What the status is, what amount was budgeted, and if there's a balance in the account, what's in there. If a project is completed, then you might see where a project came in under the estimate, you might see where a project went over the estimate, and you can kind of see the bottom line. So we're charting progress for you on all these maintenance projects that were budgeted. So when we go forward next year, and there's other projects, and somebody says, well, how did we do the ones we had in the budget this year? You'll have it here. In addition, this will also be a way for us to track for you unanticipated projects that came up because sometimes we have emergencies, and we have to do something we didn't anticipate. And we have no line in the budget for emergencies. And so what you'll see is, if something comes up that was an emergency, something else that's a listed project may not get done. And the explanation would be, the emergency came in and took its place. So that's the purpose of this list. We also did put in there, at the very end, the last page, it's on the back, is the capital improvement projects, but those I had reported on previously. And I do want to address, and Sal's here if you have any questions on any of these, because Tom's away, but we have had a delay in the ECC project. It's really a contractor issue. They've been behind, they got further behind, they got another job that was behind. It was like waiting for a contractor to come to your house, which I'm all too familiar with. And they're working on someone else's house. And the someone else's house they're working on says, oh, by the way, while you're here, can you do X, Y, and Z? Can you fix this? And they can't get out. So right now, we're looking at that project being completed around the first week in November, but it's on track, and it will happen, but I wish we could speed it up. I mean, nobody advocated more for the ECC playgrounds than me. I left a lot of sweat on the table on that one. And we're going to get it done, and I'll respond to the email that we got, but we just, it's been a little bit beyond our control. The storms, awful rains put the contractor behind, and, you know, I mean, some of it's one issue after the other, but it's contractor, happens. I don't know. So that's, it's coming. It's not like it isn't going to happen. Anyway, so thoughts or feedback on the maintenance projects or questions at this point? I can try to answer them, or Sal can try to answer them.
As Dr. Tidal knows, I asked actually for this because I thought it would be helpful not for this body, since it's in the sum of the years. This ends up being a substantial amount of money. So where we are and what kind of progress we're making, I thought was also important for the board. But quite frankly, as soon as this document is produced at the board table, it is also then available to any of the other town bodies, and I felt that that would also be helpful as opposed to waiting to the end of the year or budget season where we're getting into a surprise, excuse me. So I thank you for this because I appreciate it. I think it actually would be very helpful for us, and actually, in terms of the other town bodies appreciating where we are.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
Okay. Other, other, I don't have a whole lot of other.
[laughing]
The, just so you know, with the, Mrs. Iacono reported about the roof extension and warranty project getting favorable treatment at the RTM meeting.
Board of Finance.
I'm sorry, Board of Finance meeting. I'm working, we're in this limbo period, about to enter this limbo period with the RTM. So I'm working with the moderator, figure out what the best way is to schedule that. It may not get scheduled for October, or it may get scheduled and postponed, but it will get to the RTM this calendar year. We get into November, and they kind of, they meet, but it's organizational. Bottom line is, as long as we have funding in place from the town, by the end of the calendar year, we're going to be able to get all the benefits of that project. So right now, I'm talking to the moderator about, you know, strategically what the best thing is to do. So if you don't see it pop up, or there's no action on it in October, that may be just okay. And our fix on the Tomlinson lower parking lot is going to the Police Traffic Commission tomorrow at 4:30. I don't anticipate it's going to get approved, but it will spark a discussion that hopefully will end up with a solution. But if anybody wants to come to a meeting at 4:30 of the Traffic Commission, you're more than welcome to join me. I'm becoming an expert in all kinds of things. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Back to item 10, old business. A, end of fiscal year, June 30, 2011, report enclosure number five. Dr. Tidal?
All right. Actually, this will work out well because now, Doreen, both your items are back-to-back, so. So Doreen's going to review or answer questions on the fiscal report, and then also on the quarterly.
Thank you.
Welcome to the table.
Thank you. The final end-of-the-year balance for fiscal year 2010-11 was $31,741, which was returned to the town. At your last report, which was apparently given on June 14, projected transfers were Final budget transfers ended up being 597.5, or 0.42 percent, 4.42 of 1% of the budget, which means that the transfers dropped by approximately 1,8400 over what was, under what was projected. The shortfall areas that were reported to you were in maintenance and special ed. The original projection for maintenance transfers was 220,000. It ended up being 245,364. There were an additional $25,400 in expenses. Special ed transfer decreased by $43,008 because tuition was less than projected. The areas of savings that were reported were transportation. Special ed transportation expenses actually increased by 26.5, which reduced their, the end-of-the-year projected balance. Telephone expenses were not as high. There were additional savings of 17.8. Disability insurance and instructional, virtually no change. Technology had an additional 37.5 in expenditures, which reduced the funds available. Attrition, final expenses to be covered by attrition were not as high as originally expected, resulting in additional savings of 33.8. And all other accounts, there were small residual balances in numerous accounts in the operating budget, which realized an additional savings of 26.2. That's, that's all I have on the, on the report. That's the summary of what happened between June 14 and June 30.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Brand.
Actually, if, through the chair to Ms. Mansell, if you explained it so clearly at the board table, it's subcommittee for the subcommittee members, I think there's a cycle, there's a, we have a reporting structure, but separate from the reporting structure is a cycle that a lot of these budgets have to follow, that there is significant activity going on. And I think if you would just speak to that, that would be very helpful, because what we're looking at, I think, is a moment in time. And I think what we really want to be doing is looking at the cycle of what's going on in the budget. Those are two very different things. For instance, if I basically am trying to pay for something and haven't paid yet, but my payment is due tomorrow, and you ask me where my account is today, I'll have a lot more money in my account today than I will tomorrow. That would be a moment in time as opposed to looking at the cycle of when I pay out. They are very two different kinds of things, and I think what was being described to us at the table was this very kind of thing. So if you would be kind enough to, they do have different cycles. Actually, that might fit better into the first quarter report.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Carey?
Just as you mentioned, and I noted here, we return money to the town.
Correct.
And it appears, based on the report, when I'm looking at here, that a lot of that came out of school expenses and support expenses, the bulk of that, if I'm looking at it correctly, of 23,000, 24,000.
Yes.
So.
All other accounts.
What do we attribute that to? People are being thrifty and not using up their accounts? How do we?
They're just very small residual balances. That's not a lot of money for all the different accounts we have at the school level.
Okay. Well, I don't recall, other than teacher reserve funds, us giving money back to the town, so I think it's a good precedent, and we want to, you know, continue to do that if we do have any funds left over, even if it's a small amount. I think every bit helps in this economy, so I think that, you know.
Well, what happens is you close the year out, and actually, in fairness to Doreen, she wasn't here when we closed the year out, so.
Sure.
This, you have open estimates of what you think you're going to have to spend, and you have to make sure you have the money to cover them, because you can't make a mistake the other way.
Right.
Right? So unless you have something, where in the prior years, what happened was, I think, because of the ARRA funding was used to fill a lot of gaps, it actually came out really, really close to zero, if not exactly to zero. This year, basically, you have purchase orders out there, you know, someone buys, puts a purchase order in for $10,000 worth of something. The bill comes in July 15, and it's $9,000. You know, it's too late to spend the extra thousand. So you get little bits here and there that over 17 schools, a whole bunch of accounts, thousand bucks over their entire supply account, you end up with 30 grand. So it's kind of how it plays out. You have to play it safe a little bit. And so, you know, obviously, you try to spend it, but, you know, it's a good faith gesture as well that, you know, if we bought everything we said we were going to buy, and there's money left, then it goes back.
$37,000 is a half an FTE, so I think it's important that if we can conserve capital that way, and we can give it back to the town, I think it sends the right message. I appreciate the entire team's effort on that, and I'm happy to see that we were able to go in that direction this year.
Thank you. Mrs. Iacono?
I just want to state clearly for the record, since these things never tend to get picked up in the press, but we did, the Board of Education, return $31,741 to the town. So for those folks who think that we don't give anything back, we do.
Well, if you really want to pat yourself on the back, we actually did even more than that, because, and this budget was passed before I came here, the town was holding $325,000 in money for special education cost overages. There was a debate when the budget was constructed about excess cost, and the town held a reserve account. All right? And remember, we had this discussion as we got toward the end, that while the state grant money did improve over what we budgeted, this board legitimately had a claim on about $60,000. And we said, do we want to go back to all the town bodies for the $60,000, or can we try to, you know, do what we can do? So in fact, the board never touched any of the $325,000 that it had a right to tap into during the course of the year. So.
There we go.
There you go.
That's an even bigger number than I hope the press picks up.
An even bigger number. Right. Okay. I'm sure that that will be a big hit. You want to move on to the quarterly?
Yes. So we're on item number 11.
Doreen, why don't we go on to the quarterly? And that's where I think where Sue's question comes in.
New business. A, quarterly finance update, enclosure number seven.
That's enclosure number seven. The first quarter of the 11-12 year covers July, August, September. This is a preliminary report in that as of September 30, school had only been in session for one month. And I think this is where Mrs. Brand is referring to the cycle. September, with the beginning of school, staff assignments are being finalized, we're confirming salaries and benefits. And you would see in your report that between salary and benefits, that's over 80% of our budget. So that's what we're doing as school starts. As of 9/30, we spent just over $17 million, which is approximately 12% of the budget. We also encumbered almost $95 million, and there were submitted recs for 287 and change for a total of 95, just slightly over 95 million in encumbrances. That brings a total to 112,254, or 77% of the budget spent or reserved, leaving a balance of a little over $33 million, or 23%. The financial report distributes our budget of 145,680 over seven major categories. The personnel services include salaries, hourly wages, extracurricular stipends, and substitute pay. This is the single largest category in our budget, 67% of the budget allocation. We encumber salaries and wages when they're known. Of the $17 million that I spoke of in expenditures, almost 10.6 million was in salaries. Most of the unencumbered balances in salaries in this category, it's a little over 2.5 million, is for part-time employment, primarily subs, staff replacement, degree changes. Those are all things that will be spent over time as they're incurred. We've encumbered all the salaries except for winter and spring sports, you know, a contractual salary. Almost 14% of the next category is called fixed charges, which is benefits. This is about 14% of the budget. Nearly 80% of this category is just health insurance alone. It doesn't show on this report, but shortly after the report was printed, we made our, a payment to the medical retention fund. The other categories are lines in this area, the pension, and will be drawn down by the town. A payment was made, but they'll draw down the rest soon. And social security and life disability insurances are paid when incurred. Pupil personnel expense is the next category, our special ed costs, except for salaries out of district transportation and capital. This is probably the most volatile classification, since these expenses are determined by the special needs individual children. And there's also excess cost reimbursement offsets that, for qualifying expenses that are often uncertain in funding. Also, the excess cost. Also, the excess cost is not, is initially received in February, based on a filing done by pupil services, which is done in December. So this is all part of the, you know, the, the cycle of how things work, and, and the accuracy that are, you know, the estimation that we have to do. School expenses are all at the school level, including their supplies, and textbooks, copying, sports, other activities. There's a balance of seventy percent, which is to be expected, since we were only in school one month during this quarter. Support expenses are centrally funded, instructional programs, program implementation, non-education, non-special education tuition. The, the instructional areas of this category, of the implementation, the supplies, text, and all that kind of stuff comprises about forty-four percent of this category. We also have maintenance services in here, which is for the software and network maintenance, security, postage, that kind of support for school operations. Maintenance operation and transportation is approximately eleven percent of the budget. Transportation and utilities alone is eight of that eleven. We're in the process of confirming transportation costs, since we just, you know, started schooling and are settling in with the routes. Special ed transportation in, in this category is also very unpredictable, and, and, you know, it's like the other personnel, pupil personnel expenses, where they fluctuate based on student need. There's currently a deficit in this area, but it also hasn't, we haven't applied excess cost. This is an area of excess cost also. Utilities, we won't know until we get into the heating season. Heat is, you know, will fluctuate or determine what happens with that account. And then the final category of capital, we have, we show a budget of one point two eight million, but we have to reduce, or we'll be transferring four hundred and fifty thousand of this budget item up to health insurance. That was something that was, was decided on in a budget process. So after that's done, the balance in there of eight hundred, a budgeted balance of eight thirty-three, after the expenditures that are, or encumbrances have already been applied, that's seventy percent utilized already. So that's the, those are the numbers, and that's the process, the, kind of the cycle that Mrs. Brand, I think, was talking about, where, you know, how our expenses are incurred throughout the year.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Brand.
When, is there a timing that that four hundred and fifty thousand from the capital has to go into the health insurance?
We can expend it, we can overexpend it, and then transfer it when we start doing budget transfers in the budget.
Because there was no timeline, it was just.
No.
Mr. Fademy, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions, two of which I think you answered. They related originally to the tuition on pupil personnel expenses on line three twenty-nine. You explain that's just.
Hey, Paul, use your mic, please.
That's just the seasonal variations, sort of, or the cycle, so to speak, and when we get reimbursed from the excess cost.
Yes.
As well as, I believe you said, a portion of this student transportation, line three seventeen, that has an uncovered balance of a negative two hundred and fifty-five thousand, approximately, that some of that is going to be reimbursed based on the special education excess cost.
Right.
Do you have any feeling as to what that percent might be, as far as what that, in other words, how much of that two hundred and fifty-five thousand might be reimbursed by the excess cost reimbursement from the special education? Any feel whatsoever?
No, I haven't heard what, any news from the state as far as excess cost funding, and I'm not sure what was applied to that line item specifically for the budget, in the budget process.
Right. My guess that I would, all right, that's fair.
Paul, I'll just, there is a state budget for this year, it was, because it was a two-year budget, and they level funded excess cost. However, the legislature can always go in and change it during this little period between February and May, so that's going to be a real unknown to the, almost to the legislature finishes its work.
The, the real question primarily is, is how much of that ex, how much of that student transportation cost that is in the deficit, or the, has a negative unencumbered balance? Is it attributable to additional cost to regular busing versus a debt, versus costs that we expended for special education, which is going to be reimbursed by the excess costs? In other words, I, in other words, a lot of that could have been overexpenses in the regular busing, and not ever get reimbursed through the excess cost. I don't know.
Right.
And that just, that was my, that's the gist of the question. And I still don't know. But in any event, the next question, I, I have a question with respect to the pupil personnel expenses, line item three oh seven. Other services has a fairly large negative unencumbered balance of ninety-two thousand, ninety-two thousand, thousand dollars. I just wonder if you're in common on what, what that other services are, and why that was overencumbered by that amount?
That's another piece of excess cost, and I believe that's for contracted services.
All right, so that's not tuition?
No.
In other words, tuition wouldn't be considered, contracted services for other than tuition?
I believe, you know, like, maybe testing.
All right. The next question is support expenses, line item four oh four, supplies, BKS, which is bulk materials, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Books and another abbreviation there. But the concern I have here is that the appropriate amount is zero. You have no appropriated funds, but yet you have an unencumbered balance of over five hundred, or of five thousand dollars plus. Now, I guess the concern is that, why didn't we budget anything in that line item if we're expending money on that line item?
Which page are you on?
This is support expenses, line on four oh four, page two.
I believe there's a, a, there's a budget, and I'm not sure which line item it would be, but it's essentially funded budget, and then as schools, as they expend money, funds to specific schools, it shows up in this line, whereas it's funded somewhere else. The other, the other, that's not other. It's cat, it's budgeted in a central account, and then it's, as it's expended, and I, I don't know if this is common practice here, expended to a particular school, it went to an actual school line, wherever that might have been, but it was all text materials items. Okay.
That's it. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on then. Thank you very much. All right, we're on item B, first read policies, number four-two-two-zero, smoking by school employees. These are, and then number fifty-three fourteen, smoking students, enclosures eight and nine.
How Mrs. Parks come up and walk us through this one? Came out of the committee, and, go ahead, Karen.
Okay. Sit on. The first one, forty-two twenty, is the addition of the language after smoking, which is, or any other unauthorized use of tobacco, tobacco products, including chewing tobacco or tobacco paraphernalia. We recognize that the policy really just covered smoking, and not all of the other tobacco products, which we felt was essential to add. So we got that language from Cabe, and we inserted it in the policy, because it, we felt it better covered all of the tobacco products, which we don't want used in schools by school employees. You'll notice the difference, fifty-three fourteen, which is smoking related to student behaviors, whereas the other is related to school employees. The difference in the language for students is that they, we are asking that they, that they, not only the use, but the possession be banned, whereas with our employees, we can't really ask employees not to come to work with cigarettes, but we can ask them, or any other tobacco products, but we can ask them not to use them while they're working for us. Whereas in the case of students, we not only are banning their use, but we are banning their possession while in school.
Mr. Lou?
I think this is great. Thank you so much for, I know that this came up quickly, and I know it came back very promptly, so I appreciate the upgrade, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mr. Carey?
I noted in the student code of behavior that we're, it appears that we're, the general buildings were banning this, but students, the continuing education program are allowed to smoke?
That's in the current policy.
That is in the current policy.
So maybe someone who's been here longer than I can help me understand why we're letting some of our students smoke, but not others?
Oh, that's continuous.
It's adult.
A continuing ed.
That's the adult ed program.
I'm thinking of cooperative.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
We're not that cooperative.
Thank you. Never mind.
That'd be a great program.
Never mind.
Anybody else?
It's just a first reading, so it'll come back.
All right. So what, what happens, I have a quick question, if, so you see, and then we'll move on. My last meeting, I got asked a difficult question. What happens if, for the students, if you see a pack of cigarettes in a female student's pocketbook, what would you do then? Say, throw them out, or hide them? What would, that's, it would be in her possession. What would, what's the consequence of that? Or maybe we haven't, that hasn't happened yet, what is?
It's in the regs.
It's going to be in the regs.
It'll be in the handbook.
The handbook? Okay. All right. So, okey-dokey, thank you. Anybody else on that? Moving along, we have item C under new business, approval to revise the authorized signers of the ED zero-nine-nine agreement for child nutrition programs. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education revise the authorized signers of the ED zero-nine-nine agreement for child nutrition programs to designate David G. Title Superintendent of Schools as the person authorized to sign claims for reimbursement, and in his absence, Doreen Muncel, Director of Finance and Business Services, as the second person authorized to sign claims for reimbursement. I need a motion. Mrs. Brand, seconded by Mrs. Dow. And Dr. Title, what is this exactly?
This really just is, Doreen took Bonnie's job, and we have to change the names on the forms.
That's pretty straightforward. Any discussion on this? Any public comment on this motion? Press, this is a news story. All right. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? It's unanimous?
That's unanimous.
Next item may not be unanimous. Let's move on. D, authorize the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Fairfield Ludlow High School renovation project. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education authorize the chairman to send a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Fairfield Ludlow High School renovation project. That's listed in the long-range facilities plan. Have a motion from somebody? Mrs. Dow, seconded by Mr. Carey. Okay, Dr. Title, go ahead.
Well, with, in the, in the long-range facilities plan, this project is going to next up in line with Riverfield. When the, when we had the Capitol Planning Summit, and the first selectman put out the model of projects, this was next in the, in line, knowing the number of kids moving forward into this school, it was approved in the plan. There's a description, I photocopied the page out of the long-range plan to give you an idea of what's included in it. Seemed like it was an opportunity for this board, as the one who approved the long-range facilities plan, if you wanted to move it to the next step, to give you an opportunity to do it, because we know these projects can take a long time, and we don't have lots of time. So this would expand the footprint at Ludlow. This would add some classrooms, it would add on to the cafeteria, and, and some other things. But the biggest thing is, we're going to be squeezed for space, and this was the project we had in our long-range plan, so that's why it's on here. It's up to you as to whether we take the next step or not.
Discussion, questions, anybody? Mr. Lou?
A question first. In terms of, I couldn't find my long-range plan book today, but what, I know, it's big enough, I should be easy, I'm tripping over it all the time. What was the amount? Did we have a, a placeholder amount for that project last time? That's my first question.
Yes, it, that's the, the numbers at the bottom of the, this page, the enclosure page. We're carrying these numbers in the long-range plan.
Thank you. So I, I guess I have just two thoughts about this, or one especially. It's just, you know, we just passed the recent middle school feeder plan, and I think, I think now we can appreciate how we have real traffic problems in this area. We have the Fairfield Ludlow High School, we have Ludlow Middle School, we have Tomlinson. And I, I again have to question if we're putting more students at an already larger populated high school, given that Ludlow already has more students than Ward. I'm concerned about adding population to this already overcrowded area. And I, I really think, before we take this next step, we need a traffic study to, that addresses the future enrollment population of Fairfield Ludlow High School, and how it's going to affect the population, and, and, and the traffic situation there. You know, I also feel that, I know this is in our long-range, my second point is, I know this is in our long-range plan, but I think usually when we have to vote on a, on a number that's this big, we are given an appropriate amount of time to vet it again. I, I think three business days for me is personally not enough. I also think it gives the public usually, the, usually we give them, we bring it up at a meeting, we discuss it, we give time to think about it, so the public can chime in as well, and then we, we come back to vote on it. And I think that's, should be part of the continuing process, instead of to move forward. So I, I wouldn't want to rush this. I know you're saying here, by looking at the two numbers, that if we do it now, it's going to be one price, and if we wait a little bit, it's going to be another. But it seems to me to wait just a tiny bit to get a traffic study would be the prudent thing to do. So I would like to make a motion that we move this to a date certain in November, in, I'm sorry, excuse me, in December, with the hopes of having enough time to have a traffic study. Could I get a second on that?
So there's a motion to postpone this until the December meeting, and in the meantime, you want a traffic study done? Is that my understanding of your motion?
Well, it's not just me, I would hope the whole board would want a traffic study, because I think that's the responsible thing to do.
Okay, so, but I, I need to understand what your motion is. So your motion is to postpone this item until, until December, huh? Until December, the December meeting, for the purpose of having a traffic study at the Ludlow campus site? Just so I understand the motion, so we can have someone second it?
Correct.
Okay. Is anyone, go ahead.
It would not be a motion, it would be an amendment to the main motion.
I can make an amendment.
That's right. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Mrs. Dow, amended amendment, I'm sorry. Mrs. Dow, you going to second that? All right.
Question.
Okay, let's discuss the amended motion. Mrs. Iaccone?
I was wondering if you could, through the chair to Mr. Lou, just clarify what you want to do with the traffic study? If we know the students are there, wouldn't it be, wouldn't the better thing to be do once there's a building committee in place? Shouldn't they commission a traffic study, so they can address how to adjust a bus loop and parent drop-off and that kind of thing? I'm not sure why you want to do the traffic study now.
Because before we approve the business to go ahead with something like this, I think we should see, we already know, we already know we have traffic problems in this area. I think, do we want to exacerbate that? And what does a traffic study will tell us? We have options here, and I think we keep wanting to pretend that we don't. But I would take one step at a time with the traffic study. But, but look at, if we have another high school that has less people already, shouldn't we be considering that if we come up across traffic problems? We have traffic problems right now.
So what you're saying is that we should redistrict students out of Ludlow over to Ward, rather than putting them on the?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying let's have a traffic study first.
Why?
To see, well, are Well, are you admitting that we have a traffic study problem already?
No, I'm, I'm, what I'm, what I'm stating is the simple fact that we have, we know we have the students over at Ludlow, right?
Yes.
We know there's three schools on that campus. Why are we putting the cart before the horse and doing the traffic study now? It's a legitimate question, it's a question.
No, no, I understand the legitimate question. I think I was answering it legitimately.
Why would we do it now as opposed to having the building committee?
Because I wouldn't want to go forward with a building committee until we see if we even should be looking at building over there. Because maybe we shouldn't be building over there at all.
We already voted on that, that's in the long range plan, it's already here.
And it is in the long range plan, but it doesn't mean that every once in a while, we can't say, hey, let's think of another way to approach a problem. We don't always just go blundering through. If a door is locked, I find other ways to go through. And I think what we've seen here is, we've done the, excuse me. Excuse me, thank you. We've done the middle school feeder plan to, to different varying degrees of, of, of opinions here. And now we've found that we really do have some problems here. We have three giant schools here. And as the superintendent just said, this is our biggest population coming through. We have more students in Ludlow than we do in Ward. So part of me wants to say, all right, if this is the way we think we should be going, let's make sure we've done all of our due diligence here. And I think a traffic study is one of them.
Okay. Mrs. Iaccone, you have anything else?
No, I think we should just call spade a spade. And I think really what you're trying to do is redistrict kids out of Ludlow over to Ward. And if you want to do that, then just say it.
I think, can I just make one last comment?
No, I have the mic actually, thank you very much. I, I, I don't know that I want to move forward with this building committee request right now at this particular reason. It has nothing to do with the traffic study. It has to do with the fact that our next priority is Riverfield. And I'm not quite certain we should have two building requests on the table at the same time. However, I do think that legitimately this board approved doing this for Fairfield Ludlow High School and that we should move forward with the appropriate procedures. And that would be to move forward with a building committee and it ought to be the building committee's responsibility to look at the, the traffic plan. What you're suggesting is going backwards and reexamining the whole thing all over again.
Okay.
So I would not support a motion that includes the bus, the traffic study at this time.
I think I saw Mrs. Alvin, then Mrs. Brand. Go ahead, Mrs. Alvin. Then Mr. Fattabey. Sure, go ahead.
Clarification as to whether the motion is a motion to postpone or an amendment for the motion postponed and includes a traffic study or doesn't include. Is it just a postponement we're going to be discussing? Or is it, it includes a request for a traffic study?
The way I wrote it was, and I have it written down as this, is an amendment for the, an amendment to the motion and that amendment is to postpone the item to do a traffic study. That's what, that's how I had it written down. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Alvin?
Through the chair to Dr. Title. Would you be able, would you be able to help perhaps? If this amendment were to be successful, what criteria would you use for a traffic study? Or who would develop the criteria?
I really haven't had a chance to think about it. This is the first I've heard of it. I don't know, I don't know.
It seems.
I would think that then you would not be able to handle this in your December meeting. And I'm not, we'd have to pay for it. I mean, I don't know. I, that's, I don't have any answers.
All right, thank you.
I just put this on?
Thank you.
Mrs. Al, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brand?
Actually, we've been very fortunate. Bill Hurley's already helped us with the Tomlinson site evaluating the traffic issues there. He's done it years ago at the Tomlinson site. He's an expert. So I don't think we would necessarily have to do it. I do think though, the, the biggest issue will be the safety at that site. And we have an estimate sitting here which, if I'm not mistaken, we haven't yet got a professional estimator to look at these. It's our own estimates, correct, Dr. Title?
Yes.
What, what I'm concerned about is even moving forward with this estimate. As with the Tomlinson site, we now find that it would be better to do something to help address the traffic, which has a, has some funding involved. And I think moving forward, the, the board is going to make a decision one way or the other whether they want to move forward on it. But I think to include that safety issue, having Bill Hurley take a look at what our projected enrollment is, is going to look like, taking that into account and what may need to be done to the site for safety reasons would be very helpful, if nothing else, for the expenditure that would be required to address that. Because we don't want to have funding moving forward for a project, not taking traffic issues into account upfront and then find out a building committee doesn't have enough funds to cover it. So to me, now's the time to look at it and, and take that into consideration. And, you know, of course, a lot of folks know my, my personal sentiments about the site, but honestly, that isn't it. I think safety has to come first and I think it's prudent to look at it now and anticipate that in our funding request.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Fattabey?
I just have a, I hope this is germane to the main, to the motion, but at least it relates to the postponement aspect of it. Maybe not the traffic study aspect, but a portion of the motion. And that is, my question is, do we have educational specifications for this site? So as far as postponement, it would be my reluctance to push forth a funding request without educational specifications of some nature. I don't know.
We haven't developed educational specifications for Riverfield. I mean, that's not done yet. I mean, you get a basic outline of the project and then by the time we, I mean, building committees don't happen overnight. And so there's time to develop that. And based on the educational specs, then the building committee will come up with an estimated number that goes forward. The board doesn't push the number forward. We have an estimate in our long range plan. But ultimately, the building committee is going to hire an architect to come up with a professional cost estimate. But there are no educational specifications for this project at the moment, nor are there per Riverfield.
I, I think it's difficult to request any sum of money without knowing what the educational specs are. And I, my belief is that that's usually done ahead of time, but not the case. Mrs. Alvin?
If I read the motion, the original motion correctly, it's not making a financial request. It's making a request that a building committee be established.
That's all. Right. Anybody else on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Carey?
I guess my concern in delaying at this point is, two meetings ago, the superintendent gave us a listing of all the projects, some of which spanning back to 2008, some of which spanning back to 2001, if you count the Ludlow windows. And the reality is this, the reality is, there's going to be 1,800 kids in that site in the next three years. There's going to be 1,500 kids at the Ward site in the next three years. And the longer that we are part of the bureaucratic problem, the less of a chance we're going to be able to address that problem. So I, I do see the point about looking at traffic. I think it's a valid one. I don't know if, to Mrs. Iaccone's point, that should be something that our team should be handling exclusively. I do believe in the past, and I could be wrong, that that's been the purview of building committees. I don't have a problem potentially doing something like that in parallel. I would be concerned and want to hear back from the superintendent if that's kind of in our team's bailiwick or if we don't have a budget for that, are we extending ourselves too far or should we be looking to the town? I think getting that information is fine, but I don't think it's going to change the process, which is a two to three year process to get us, this, this building fixed, which will be right at the same time the glut hits. So we're kind of behind the eight ball from that perspective. So my concern is postponing it, to wait for this, I think is going to put us in a situation where we're not going to be able to service the community. Although maybe doing something in parallel would be something I would, I would consider as long as that we're not putting too much of a burden on the administration and taking away time from educational priorities we've outlined for our team.
I think just, and I'll get to you, Mr. Lou, in a second. I see your hands up. The request is a form of building committee. The building committee can, will look at traffic. They could come to the, they could come to the conclusion that, you know what, maybe you can't have, because of traffic problems, 1,800 kids in this school. I, I don't know. I don't think the fact that you're forming a building committee precludes any traffic study in the next year or two, so.
It might be required.
It might be, it's probably going to be required at some point. I mean, we've had building committees formed and there's the intent to do certain things in a project and the building committee after hiring professionals to look at it, come back and say, guess what? You can't do this, for whatever reason. And I can give you many examples. I've been on many building committees. So all we're doing here is requesting that a building committee be formed. All those other items that are a genuine concern to many board members, and I understand that, I think would be looked at by the building committee and I think traffic study would be required. Mr. Lou, I just saw your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Intol. I've been on a building committee too. And yes, it is a required thing or definitely some part of the process. The, the difference, I think, here is we have gone into situations before without a glaring transportation problem that's staring us right in the face. It's been on the lips of everyone in town, including the papers, including our own boards. And without going backwards, we have to face the fact that we have a problem in this area with three schools back to back, already overcrowded. I think sometimes being not part of the bureaucratic process is thinking a little bit outside the box. Why would we push forward on something that we haven't completely vetted when we know there is a problem there? And I think this is the same argument that we heard last time when we were trying to get into the middle school feeder plan and is that we've got to do it now. If we don't do it now, it's going to, it's going to be a problem. We're going to be behind. Well, this is a time to start saying, hey, before, I'm not trying to get us behind, but I'm also trying to say, look at, we, we had that problem last time and we did get into a traffic problem. And a traffic problem that's even, as, as Dr. Title has said, is now it's going to go to the traffic police and the traffic police are going to take a couple of years. We know how long these bureaucratic processes take. So why don't we try to do a little preventive action? I'm not trying to cancel out that this might not be the place that we're going to put the new students and that we might not need to increase Ludlow. But it seems to me that if we don't take an active step first in leadership, we are falling into the trap of all the bureaucrats that we've ever sort of dissed.
Okay, anybody else on the amendment? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this amendment to the motion? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of the amendment? I have Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, opposed. Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Alvin, Mrs. Iaccone, myself. So the amendment fails. So we're back on the main motion, which is, yes, the authorized chairman has sent a letter to the first selectman requesting a building committee for the Fairfield Ludlow High School renovation project. So any further discussion on the motion that's on the agenda, the main motion? Yes, Mr. Lou?
And I would like to make a motion that we postpone without a traffic study. That way we can talk more about whether we want a traffic study. I know some people didn't want a traffic study before. They wanted to possibly postpone. Mrs. Iaccone had said that. So I think that should be the next step here. So I'd like to make a motion to postpone until the September, the December meeting.
Okay, so there's a.
Amendment, please, thank you.
It's a motion to postpone. So it's a motion to postpone to the December meeting. Do I have a second? Mrs. Brand, any discussion on the motion to postpone the main motion, the main item to the December meeting? Seeing no. Public, does the public have any comments on this motion to postpone the main item to the December meeting? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Looks like it. All in favor? I have Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Dow, opposed. Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Alvin, Mrs. Iaccone, and myself. Okay, so now we're back on the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? From board members. Does the public have any comment on the main motion? Yeah, we got some people coming. State your name and address for the record. Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Bidy Ann O'Shaughnessy, Queens Grant Road. I'm very concerned about putting this many students at Ludlow High School. It's already very overcrowded. Classes are getting bigger and bigger. And I don't know, I am very concerned about the safety. I've been involved with this school in getting the changes that were made because there was such a disaster in the parking lots. And with, we keep adding more students, that I'm concerned that this is not going to be fast enough to take care of this issue. I would like to see you think about doing something else, even asking students, like the McKinley thing, do you want to come in? Will you want to voluntarily move from Ludlow to Ward? Because we need to get students out of Ludlow. We know that Ward can handle students. They've, they had 1,800 easily in that school and they can just handle the, the load. Ludlow cannot. The traffic is bad. You're going to hear people complaining at the train. They're trying to catch a train to get to work, to pay for this stuff. And they're not too happy when nobody thinks about the train, people riding those trains, the train guys, I call them. You know, out of sight, out of mind. They're not happy about that. This should have been addressed before. You didn't address it, but it needs to be addressed immediately. And to wait two or three, four years for a possible addition, can you even put an addition there? Maybe asking a building, from a building committee and just having the town say no would, maybe that's the right thing to do. Have the town, you know, get it over with so then you can do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Coyle. I live at 84 Sherwood Farm Road in Fairfield. And I'm currently the Fairfield Ludlow High School PTA president-elect. I am speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of our board. Just have kind of a series of questions for you. I would like to know if the board has considered how much more square footage there is at Ward High School. I would also like to know if the board has considered moving the ECC currently located at Ward High School to, moving it to maybe Old Field to create more high school space at Ward. I would like to know if the board has considered that you must receive a waiver from the town for Ludlow's expansion and that you might not receive that waiver? I would also like to know if the board has considered that Ludlow High School is already overcrowded with its capacity at 1,400, its current enrollment greater than 1,500 and growing every day, every year reaching over 1,800 in the next few years. I would also like to know if the board has considered that the proposed solution to this overcrowding will take years to accomplish, considering the lengthy approval process through town boards and subsequent construction of the project. I would also, also like to know if the board has considered completing another traffic study for Ludlow and its surrounding areas. Would like to know if the board has considered the tax burden on this town with another school expansion after Stratfield, Fairfield Woods, Sherman, and possibly Riverfield. And I would also like to know if the board has considered that with the combination Roger Ludlow Middle School, Ludlow High School and its expansion, that you will have and will continue to place the highest concentration of students on the most overutilized and stressed school campus in the busiest area of town, while another high school campus of roughly equal size across town will be grossly underutilized in comparison. Thank you.
Next.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. I can't, I can't even begin to fathom that we're sitting here now deciding that it's time to talk about the high school when we sat through the middle school redistricting plan and that's all I heard was parents commenting about the high school. And all the middle school redistricting plan did was create more congestion, so I can only imagine what this is going to do. Something else has to be done. And you guys ran through middle school redistricting. Please take your time on whatever you're attending to do here. For the record, if we could, I hope we're not spending a million dollars on girls and boys' gang bathroom renovations. I hope there, there are other bathrooms for the other students, not just for gangs, which was what is in on here. So if we could just put the million dollars to the other boys and girls and maybe not give the gangs at the high school the nicer bathrooms, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Had a little West Side Story joke there.
Hi, I'm Ken Lee, I live at 71 Rota Avenue, and as a veteran of a renovation, I just really wanted to thank everybody for the Sherman renovation, which will be done, I guess, next year, after my daughter is graduating. However, if all things being said, she will be going to Ludlow, so, and I hear what everybody's saying, but I also hear that building committees are to study before they build. And I don't see anything's wrong with getting a group of professionals together and studying something. I really don't see the downside of that, because I can tell you personally how long it takes to get anything done. And it is a difficult process, and it should be a difficult process, and it should be a lengthy process, because it's a lot of money, and we don't have a lot of money to spend, so, I mean, that's just my thought. And what I'm really here is just thank those people who are retiring, because I've watched a lot of these meetings, and it's a lot of hard work and a lot of time, and whether I agree or disagree with any of you, I certainly appreciate what you do for all of us, and I just wanted to say thank you publicly to all of you who are leaving. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a little off-topic, but thank you anyway. Okay, Mrs. Albin, did you have something else on this, and then any other board member?
Comment before we vote. I just want to explain, I will vote yes for this, because in the list are many items of work that need to be done to this building that don't relate to student population, and I also have faith that when a building committee does study this, they will determine whether or not the site can handle additional students and an addition, and we have had that happen before, and we've found ourself being told no, or having to change direction, so I am comfortable in placing that trust in the building committee. And I will have a comment that somewhat ties to this, but I will save it for open board comment later, to speak to the future board.
Yes, Mrs. Brand.
Point of information, I believe a building committee does what its charge is, and it generally is not a feasibility about the site, it's about doing the project with whatever amount of money they think is necessary. We've done feasibilities, studies in town before, but that is separate from what a building committee is charged with, generally.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Albin.
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this, but building committees have come back to this board and told us, "We can't do it." And I've listened to, I believe, countless, I would not want to enumerate the number of building committees at this point, but we have been told it doesn't work, and we've had to give them revised ed specs. So, that's all.
Any other discussion on the main motion? Mr. Carey?
I typically don't respond to public comment, but the answer to Mrs. Coyle's question is an unequivocal yes to all of them. And we discussed the middle schools and high schools in depth through the facilities process when we looked at the middle school feeder plan. There's a perception that there's a vast difference between Ward and Ludlow. The difference between the two campuses is the amount of space that you could potentially build on, but if you look at the building specs, there's the same amount of classrooms. Ward is a slightly bigger facility, and I think it's by a net of 22,000 or 23,000 square feet, 12 of which is occupied by the ECC. But the reality is that we're going to have 500 more kids than we have space for. Both schools are going to be overcrowded. So, the discussion we had is, are we going to solve the problem where it is, or are we going to move the problem? And the decision was that we weren't going to move the problem. Now, if we find, through our investigation, otherwise, we have to look at that again, but I do agree with Mrs. Iacono that we keep on coming back to the same discussion we've had over and over again. The reality is that the $6 million is going to have to be spent on one building or the other, and that's going to be something that we have to decide real quick if we're going to get this done to meet the population crush. So, you know, at risk of getting us into this us-versus-them battle that's going on in this town for the last 30 years, I don't see that overcrowding one school more than another, or moving that overcrowding back and forth is going to help solve this problem. We're trying to address the problem where it is, and, you know, if a board member wants to come up with a redistricting plan that they think they can play Solomon and cut the 150 in half, I'm still willing to see it.
Mr. Lewin, you have something?
Yeah, just very quick, I mean, as a loyal opposition here, and I understand that we're going to have our differences, and that's fine, but I think, just to be fair, the counter would be that I completely disagree with what Mr. Carey says, and how we came to these conclusions, which I don't think we came to, we did not discuss EEC. We discussed it, but we never talked about it, it was never part of any kind of program. And so, there's a lot of different interpretations, and just so you know, there are two sides to every coin. Thank you.
Mr. Fattabean.
Well, I don't think it's ideal or desirable to have two high schools of substantially different size. I do believe that we sort of set a direction that is going to take us there, and it's sort of incumbent upon us now to make that direction as, as, as good as possible, and we have to accommodate these kids that are going to be there. So, that's why I think it's important that we eventually have form a building committee and move forward with the necessary renovations to Ludlow to accommodate the kids that, in our past plans, have indicated are going to be there. My only reluctance tonight is that I would have preferred that we see some sort of educational specifications to determine what that building committee is going to be charged with doing. I don't know what the building committee is going to do without building ed specs, education specifications. So, I don't know whether it's a little premature or not, in my opinion, but I do think it's important to move it forward, because the kids are coming there, and they're going to be there, and we're going to have to do something. So, my only reservation is that I don't have any ed specs.
Yes, Mrs. Iacono.
You raise a good point, but I think we can get the ball rolling tonight, and through the discussion is really where I've made up my mind on why I think this should move forward, because I did have reservations. But to everyone's point that spoke publicly, you swayed me into voting in favor of moving this forward, because it is a long process. It does take a long time. I've been on the Sherman Building Committee, and my goodness, it's been a long time, and we do need to start, because it's going to take a while. I think, Mr. Fattabean, to your point, it, the motion as it's listed, says, as listed in the long-range facilities plan. So, I'm comfortable knowing that that's enough to at least get the building committee started. What I would like to see, and if the superintendent would make a note of, if the board's in agreement, is that we get working on the educational specifications that way, once hopefully the building committee is in place, we'll have something specific that we can move forward to. But I don't think we need to hold off, because I think we have, we have something to start from that can at least get the ball rolling, and then we can continue to march forward, so to say.
Yeah, well, I think we need to do ed specs for Riverfield, and we need to do ed specs for Ludlow, and we'll need to get that, and the board will be the ones to approve that. So, that would definitely happen. The process of getting a building committee formed at this point is fairly lengthy, so in fact, probably, if I get you ed specs in the next four months, it will not be late.
Mrs. Brand.
My primary concern is the timing, and honestly, the cost as well. The timing issue was, I felt if we were, and I realize we're not here, but we did the traffic study, we'd actually really appreciate whether, how feasible this was and likely it was for us to be able to move on before we commit. And we're going to do this, we could go further down the process, and as Mrs. Albin said, find out the answers, no. We've lost an awful lot of time and an awful lot of ground, and we've then put a lot of kids in a site that not only can't handle it, will not be able to handle it, and provide the same level of programs that it will at the other site. Again, I just don't want us to go so far down a road and have the answer be no. I mentioned this, I think it was back in the early fall, about the improbability of having a zoning waiver for that site, again, because it was pursued with the feasibility study at the middle school. To me, it has a lot to do with the density at the site, and that was, again, the concern. If we ran into a traffic issue up front, that's a red flag, and I'd rather have us know that now and incorporate it. You decided not to do it, but it doesn't change how I feel about the site and some of the concerns I've had, and it expressed in the past. I will not be supporting this, because I don't think this is the most cost-effective way to address this issue.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The public already commented on this, so are we ready to vote? Looks like we are. All in favor? I have Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Albin, Mrs. Iacono, myself, opposed. Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Brand, Mr. Lew. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. And we're going to move on to item number 12, public comments and petitions. During this period, the board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes, and audiovisual equipment cannot be used without the advanced authorization of the chairman. The board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member of the board. Decorum will be enforced. Citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Do we have any public comment tonight? Nothing? Okay. Moving on to item 13, open board comment. Mrs. Albin.
This is really for the future board, so the people that will remain here, sitting here tonight, and maybe some of those people out in the audience who might be joining them. I believe what, the time has really come that the future board look at new models for how students leave their elementary schools and move on to secondary school. There's only so much space in this town, and we can add on to both of our high schools, and it's not going to be perfect. We've added on to a middle school, and it's not perfect, and we're never going to divide 11 schools comfortably into all these spaces. There are other ways you can address it, and I think that the time really has come that, in this next board, or subsequent to that board, that you'll have to look at different assignments. There are towns that have different models, and so, I think you certainly will have to do it, based on the discussion we just had. You can't just take, you have perhaps 1,500 students in one high school, and 1,800 expected in another high school. The 300 just don't magically come from a single elementary school. It's just not working, so you will have to look at different models in the future, and come up with another way that we populate our secondary schools. At one time, Fairfield did have the ability to attend different schools by choice where there was space available. I'm not telling you how to do it, but the future board is going to have to look at that.
Mrs. Iacono.
I would just like to acknowledge at the board table, since this is our last regular meeting of this sitting board, our members who are retiring. Mrs. Dow, thank you for your service for the past four years. I'd like to thank Mrs. Zahn, who's not here this evening, and she is running for reelection, so hopefully she'll be rejoining us. I would like to thank our chairman, Mr. Matola, for his six years of service on the board. And an extra personal thanks for working well together with me as your vice chair. I really appreciate everything that you did, and I saw your true leadership skills, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Albin for her 10 years? Oh, 12, 12, yes, I always think of the 10-year cable word, 12 years of service to the Fairfield Board of Education. Thank you, you are our longest-serving member at this time, and you will be sorely missed. Not sure what we're going to do without our parliamentarian. So, thank you. And I would like to acknowledge Mr. Fattabean, who's been on the board for two years, who, again, is up for reelection, and hopefully will be rejoining the board, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Anybody else? Yes, Mrs. Brand.
I actually would look at some of the prospective candidates for the Board of Ed, and start out with, "Welcome to the Board of Ed. We take care of your most precious possessions, your children and your money." This is probably, by nature of those two things, the most difficult and oftentimes contentious. I believe that people that come and sit here understand that and realize it's not going to be easy, so because of that, I assume it's like diving into the frying pan. It's a challenge, and I think because of that, we owe the people that sit here and have put in the time, Mrs. Dow, Mr. Matola, and Mrs. Albin, and Mrs. Zahn, an extraordinary thank you, because, again, this is probably, I think, the hot seat of all the board, and I'm sorry, Mr. Fattabean, thank you, Mr. Lew, but it is the hot seat, and we often forget to remind people of that, of how this is. You can talk to any other person who is in an office. You'll talk to the state folks, and they say, "Where are you?" And you'll say, "This is the Board of Ed," and they'll all roll their eyes and go, "Oh, God." It is, and we all recognize it. So, not only did you put in time, but you, I believe you put in time with the most challenging position there is, so a truly heartfelt thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. Mr. Carey. No, I, yeah, I just, then we can adjourn. Just, you know, thanks for six years, it was a pleasure serving on this board, it's a lot of hard work, I would recommend it for anyone. I really, I really don't have any regrets. I, I'm not going to do it again. It's usually enough, but, you know, I, it's been a pleasure, and just thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Good night, everyone. Yeah, that's true, we could be back.
I said last regular meeting. I said regular meeting.